Is the 2019 proposed property tax levy and proposed budget?
Okay, clear the public hearing open and ask if anybody wishes to speak. Anybody wish to speak to this issue of the property tax levy and proposed budget? One more chance, anybody wish to speak? Hearing none, clear the public hearing close and ask if there's a motion.
If this item, it's just a taken, no action required. So moving on to item 2.2, the Visit Winona 2019 proposed budget, and Jamie Shell and Pat Mutter are here to present their budget request.
Clear this public hearing open and please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Jamie Shell, 1234 Gilmore Avenue. This is not Pat Mutter.
Really? You fooled me.
I don't know if you need his address, Mayor.
No, we can find him.
So Matt is up here with me because next year he will be the sitting chair for Visit Winona, next year, so he's joining me up here last year like I did with Ann McDonald. And we'll make this considerably briefer than last week, or two weeks ago, my other people. First of all, I want to thank council for your support at Visit Winona. Appreciate that very, very much. I want to thank city staff, who we collaborate with often. We want to thank park and rec department especially for all of the projects that they've been doing. Going viral with videos, projects like that are, that really is what we do as well, so having things like that be successful elsewhere in the community is wonderful to see, and it's great to hear the analytics, because that's where we're going with Visit Winona. We want to thank our partners, all of our volunteers, our visitor center staff, who are the face to Visit Winona. When you arrive at the visitor center, you're not from here, those are the people that are smiling and welcoming you. Our staff internally, Pat Mutter, Kate Carlson, Mary Farrell, and then of course the other individuals that we have as subcontractors, they all do amazing work, and then our board. So to get into it, you were all given a packet, just with some information, some of the things we've been doing this year. Surprisingly weird, some people internally don't like it, but our analytics say it works wonderfully to what we're doing in marketing elsewhere. So we, that's one of our very bold, strong marketing approaches we've done this year that has really opened up a whole bunch of very creative marketing campaigns that are working well for folks. It also allows us to consider things like incredibly entertaining, ruggedly outdoors, the unexpectedly cosmopolitan, that's really surprisingly weird in a town of 30,000 people that you can do all these things here. So then also in that packet, you will see Minnesota tourism statistics and numbers and data. I just encourage you to take a look at that and understand how important tourism is to our region and the state here. So then we're going to go to social media. This year, Visit Winona has invested a considerable amount in restructuring our staff. We have taken from, we're no longer working with ad agencies and other agencies to do a lot of work. We've realized that we have far greater talent right here in our staff, and with one of our subcontractors, who's local Cynthia Porter, and then Emily Skeels, we brought on as a social media specialist this year. That's all money that we've restructured, put back into people locally that are doing work that is far more powerful, we feel, than what we were gaining before. Not only is that, it's very responsive. So that's been really exciting, and through social media, if you look at some of the numbers in there, we're getting, this year estimated that we're going to be near, between all of our marketing campaigns, 23 million impressions, which is an unbelievably huge number compared to anything we've done before. And we attribute a lot of that to our social media, our ability on social media to get out these ad campaigns that are getting viral almost and very, just tons and tons of clicks. And there's a sheet in there where you see we are outperforming La Crosse, we get 46.59% higher impression rates than they do, we get 501 times higher than Eau Claire, which is insane. These are cities right around us that are similar to us, but we are absolutely blowing them away in social media. You know, 187 times higher than Brainerd, 38 times higher than Duluth, which to me is extremely important. So I really encourage you to look at that and see how well our staff is doing their job right now. It's absolutely amazing, it blows my mind when I see those numbers. So as we get going through that a little more, another really exciting thing you see is the ad that was in the Star Tribune for Thanksgiving. That came up out of the blue, we got that ad at an insanely great price, last minute because we were able to respond last minute. That saw, 1.2 million people got that newspaper that day, and it cost us less than one cent per person that saw that. So it was pretty, pretty mind blowing. And again, I credit our staff for being able to have those connections and get that opportunity last minute to do that. So in the community, just so you know, we have 154 partners, that's in town, these are people that pay to be in Visit Winona's guide every year, that also, they gain all, there's a ton of other benefits that we have, that we give to, that we meet with them, we collaborate with them, we help them in their marketing. And this year, we've taken some of those reserve funds, our infamous reserve funds for some of known over the years, we've done a very good job building up our reserves, now we're investing and using those. We gave out $14,000 in grants to local partners to actually do targeted marketing projects. So they presented to us, said this is what we would do with that thousand, and we said that's a great idea, here's a thousand dollars to help them with our ad. We're going to continue that program. Visitor Center is open year round now, that now I think speaks loudly that Winona is open for business, for tourists to come here. Then we also have local artists and merchandise at our new building, and I really encourage everybody to stop in there, there's a lot of great Christmas gifts to give to your family, great t-shirts, a bunch of other things that are really wonderful, so. And then we have this week in Winona, and we also have the Tourism Matters column, that I think speaks locally, people get to see that. So we just want to thank you for your support, and open it up to any questions if you have any of us about our budget or about any projects we have going on.
Well, I don't have a question, but I could comment, I have a front row seat to watch Visit Winona and the staff working, and in the same building as they are, and it's been fun over the last three decades plus to watch Visit Winona grow and mature into a really fine organization. I want to say thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Questions, George?
Yeah, just a comment here too, as a look at the income, and thanks to both you guys for a fantastic season. The lodging receipts, that appears to be your largest income bracket here, and I think, I know I've mentioned in the past, and I believe you do do it, but just to our local hotel owners who make tremendous investments, ones being made right now in our community to generate more of the revenue, that they be, just be recognized, or sent a letter of appreciation thanking them for their investments and their efforts in the community, so.
Yeah, absolutely, George, we do, and we always will.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a resolution.
Make a motion to approve.
Got to close the public hearing. Yeah. Was there anybody else that wished to speak? Anybody else wish to speak? All right, I'll close it, get a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Carries.
Item 2.3 is a public hearing to consider vacating a portion of Chestnut Street.
Okay, declare the public hearing open and ask if anybody wishes to speak to the closing of Chestnut Street. State your name and address, please.
All right, Sandra Burke, address 402 Second Street in Winona. And I am here this afternoon, I just finished a board meeting, and it was my charge to come before the council and just see if we could postpone this for a month, to give us time to make sure we are able to access our loading dock on Chestnut Street.
Any further questions?
It's going to be thousands of food coming in, so it would be a great help for us to take some time to take a look at it.
Sure, and thank you for your work. Anybody else wish to speak?
Hello, Kevin McConville with Golden Harbor, Winona, I have 65 Laird Street, just purchased that business earlier this spring, prior to the announcement, and we use the alley that runs along the Winona Food Shelf quite frequently, and I'm concerned about the 150-foot section that they have deemed as vacation or vacated, and I'm concerned about the access to that alley. Personally, I don't have any concerns over the use of the rest of the street, as long as it remains open from that alleyway to Chestnut Street. Like I say, it is used on a daily basis, if it was 140 feet, I wouldn't be here, but it's 150, so just wanted to voice that, and I'm also in support of learning more about what they're going to do with that. 150, 140, I'm not sure, there hasn't been any details as to what's going to happen on that property, other than it's a 150-foot section of parole that's going to be shut down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wish to speak? One more chance, anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, public hearing close, and ask if there's a motion.
Mayor, I would so move that we postpone this vote until our second meeting in January.
A second that.
Okay.
And I said, this is the first hearing that we've had on this, and you know, they brought concerns up in our engineering department, or whoever, or Keith, whoever, to get that taken care of, so.
Okay, motion by George, and seconded by Paul, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, the appointments to the Citizens Environmental Quality Committee of Julie Fassbender and David Schmidt.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by George, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Carries.
Item 3.2 is a request to remove handicap parking and return to two-hour parking at 163 Walnut Street.
Move to approve the introduction of the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Paul, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1, award the contract for the lift stations number six and number nine replacement. I distributed the bid summary to you this evening, the low bidder is R&amp;R Excavating with a bid of $1,528,601.73.
I would make a motion for discussion here to approve that bid to R&amp;R Excavating.
Al second it. Motion by George, and seconded by Jerry, discussion, George?
Yeah, Keith could touch on this with a large discrepancy.
Mayor and council, it is higher than estimated, estimated, but with the grouping we have of four of them all in the same ballpark, we're very comfortable with those prices. We've gone through those and do not have a problem with that. One company did ask that their bid be withdrawn because they missed a portion, missed a part of a subcontractor bid, but with those, that kind of grouping, we don't have a problem with those prices.
Paul?
Uh, Keith, so wondering what, where we were off with our estimate, I mean, where was the big discrepancy, and if this is a harbinger, because we have other houses to do, some houses to do?
There was some additional work done as far as the buildings, the actual lift station buildings on top, enclosing some of the generators and some of that things, the areas on top, the actual pumping, the controls are the same, but there were some things that were not included in the original estimate, that were included in the project.
Al?
A couple of questions. Where are lift stations, lift stations six and nine located in the city, and has R&amp;R Excavating done work for the city before?
Six is on Sarnia by Viola, by the mall, and nine is out at the airport.
Okay.
And we have not worked with these folks before.
Where are they from?
They're from Hutchinson.
Okay.
And they have done similar work, they're a large contractor, a large general contractor. We have not dealt with them before.
Okay.
Any other questions? George?
Yeah, but looking at the bids, and you brought up a good point, Keith, which I agree with, that they're all within 20,000 of each, and they're all at a higher number, so I guess I'd be comfortable awarding that to R&amp;R.
Just an additional comment to, I know the one at Gilmore, I assume like the one on Mankato will result in less of an odor in the neighborhood?
Yes, it should.
Okay. Thank you.
That's worth something.
Should.
Yeah, that's right. No doubt.
Any other questions? Are we both? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the 2019 final levy and budget, and there are two resolutions, one for the levy and one for the budget.
I would move to approve the attached resolution for the levy.
I'll second that.
Motion by George, and seconded by Paul, discussion?
One item, no. I'm sorry.
Jerry, you head?
I'm going to vote against this, and I've made it clear throughout the whole time. There's a lot of things in here that I agree with, but just the overall concept, I just wish it was a bit smaller, and I'm hoping in the future, as we talked about it this last budget session, that council gives administration an indication earlier in the process of kind of where their wishes are, and it'll make it easier through their process and also through the council's process at the very end. But again, I'm not going to single out anything in here specifically, especially things that go with safety, but from an overall perspective, I'm going to vote against it.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Aye. Motion carries.
I make a motion to adopt the final, the 2019 budget.
Second that.
Okay, motion by Paul, and seconded by Pam. Discussion? George?
Said I've had some comments today too, which a lot of comments always kind of come in late in the process, where they would like to see a lower, a lower budget, a lower levy, and I assured them that we'd try to work on that as much as we can, and we'll go from here in the future, so.
All right. Any other comments? Ready to vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Aye. Motion carries.
And we will move now to item 5.9, the 2018 comprehensive parks plan.
I move to approve.
I'd second that.
Motion by Paul, and seconded by Pam. Discussion. We spent 45 minutes prior to the council meeting talking about this, and as I said then, I want to thank all the citizens that were involved, and the staff, and ISG, and all the input that went into this, it's an amazing document, really. We're not approving any money tonight, but we are approving about a 15-year plan for our parks, and I think it's very well done. Al?
I'm still, I mean, even though we've had all of the input, all the citizen input, the meeting tonight, I'm really not comfortable in moving forward, and I'd rather see this postponed till that meeting in January to really give people additional input to recognize that. I'm not saying that, you know, I would not vote to support this, but I would like to hear more from citizens, I know we've all received comments from folks who are certainly supportive of that, but I just like to hear more information from the citizens about this. I know we've had that process going forward for the last six months of the year, but I think once we give it another month, we might have a better handle on the community input and what their desires are.
Personally, I'm not opposed to postponing the vote either, partly because Councilwoman Alexandra is missing here tonight, and I think it would be important to have all the council vote on this, but.
We have a motion on the floor, so I guess I would.
Other comments? Paul?
Yeah, I, you know, action and plans happen by people who show up. I'm looking at more people in the council chamber than we've had in all 2018. I'm guessing that the majority, if not 99% of those people are here because of this park plan. I think it's a great plan, I understand that this isn't about funding, however, you know, that said, I think we could, we could and should match the work of a city that's one tenth the size of Winona, but I think we should go ahead. I think this is about breakthroughs for this community, about creating possibilities, about what we can be in moving forward. And I understand a short delay really isn't going to change that much, but I really think we can approve this tonight and move forward, and council member Alexander will be happy we did.
Pam?
Yes, I, this has been a great long year of work on this plan, and I'd like to see us move forward into 2019 with some momentum to start looking at ways to implement. So I'm in favor of voting tonight.
George?
Yes, thank you. I spent some time, let's say as this process was going, reading in the paper and getting comments from people that those that had an interest into this, and as I spoke with some of the staff here, I spoke with the manager last week, and we thoroughly went through the, well, not thoroughly, but we went through the document, which I knew more tonight than what I knew before I came here. I'm comfortable either way, pushing this through tonight, pushing it through, let's say the second month in January, or the second meeting in January, but it's up to us. I think as it was said, we're not going to spend $1. We are not asking for no money, and as this document goes forward, or the whole planning process, and we've adopted a lot of comprehensive plans and things over the years for parks and streets and sewer and water and so on, but as we look at this, this would be for council's decision to make, do we want to, do we want to fund this particular part of the project or not? Am I right in saying that?
Mayor and council, as I mentioned, your council action item in the pre-council tonight, you're not approving $1 tonight in funding, other than 2019 annual budget you just passed. But the plan itself is not coming to you for a funding source, a funding stream, or an action to kickstart or implement the plan. That comes later, we plan on doing that quickly, it's not going to be a long time before we come back to start implementing parts of this plan. But again, tonight, you're not approving any funding source or project tonight, you're planning this document, as I stated in the pre-council, as a planning tool for the Parks Department to use for the next 10 to 15 years.
Chad, could you speak to the council and the community about legacy funding, and how passage of this plan helps that process, and what that timeline might look like for 2019?
So mayor and council, we, if we want to be involved in funding cycle for this year, meaning to apply for legacy dollars, the plan needs to be adopted, the overarching plan. As I mentioned in the pre-council, we would bring you a more specific bluff traverse plan at the next meeting. That specific master plan is what we would submit for legacy funding. Those grants are due in early spring, so in order for us to apply in early spring, we need to come back to council for funding allocations, if we are wishing to implement that project right away and get going. If we miss those spring deadlines, we're another calendar year out, and then potentially another year out before shovels are in the ground. And so if we want to pursue, again, local and state and federal funding, there are some deadlines that are fast approaching.
But they could be met by the next meeting.
Our grant process, we still have probably two or three council meetings before we would need to bring the grant to council for approval, so we do those classic resolutions that say that if you are in support of this project, you're in support for this dollar amount, and that's what we submit as a resolution to the, to the grant org. And we likely would have that opportunity in February to do that before those are due. Again, we think that Michelle specifically, Paul has asked some financial questions, that we need to bring that information back. We've talked about bringing you those concepts and ideas so that you have time to think about them before the next meeting, before any actions taken, so there is some, there are some moving parts here that certainly are pushing up against that deadline.
Chad, Councilman Craig brought up in the pre-council meeting about Deer Park, if we approve this resolution, are we also approving closing of Deer Park?
Mayor and council, Councilman Craig brought up a good point, maybe I wasn't as explicit as I needed to be, but that's in the recommendation and opportunity section in Prairie Island. We did get a lot of public input at those meetings about closing the Deer Park, however, you have directed us not to do that, and as I mentioned in the plan, if we have agreements or council action items, then those things don't happen. But because of the number of comments and inputs, remarks that we heard about the Deer Park, ISG recommended we keep it in there in the 10 and 15-year plan, because of the situations that Jerry had mentioned in the pre-council, that we keep it in the plan for the 10 to 15 years, primarily because 10, 15 years from now, you know, the likelihood of the Deer Park still existing are maybe slim. So if you adopt this plan tonight, that does not mean the Deer Park closes. We would not do that, you directed us not to do that. I think we mentioned at one of the other council meetings that you posed the question if we were closing any parks, my answer at that time was no, we're not closing any parks. We look at maybe maintaining parks differently, the closure of any park, including the Deer Park at this time is not happening.
Thanks for the.
Thank you for explaining. George?
So if council votes to adopt this plan tonight, from here on in, how does anything get added in or taken out?
Mayor and council, as I mentioned in the pre-council meeting, if there are non-substantive changes, which we need to define, but basically what that means is, we know that there's some grammatical errors still in the plan, we know we referenced the wrong date for the community health assessment, we referenced John Latch, not, you know, that he deeded Latch Island to the city, that's incorrect, we purchased Latch Island. So those non-substantive changes would just happen through our department. So if there's a date change or clerical error, which I also forgot to mention, that the Agamene Park Plan is listed on page 19 of the comp plan, but it does have the wrong date. It's the correct plan, but the wrong date. Non-substantive change, the department would change that. If there's a substantive change, meaning if there's a development, there's a project, something that would need a funding source outside of the annual budget, that it needs to come back to council for action. And then we do a modification to the plan, or an addendum to the plan, and that's done through council action. The difficult part that I think is hard to define is that the park rec department still will function and operate and do things like we, in a sense, we always have, as far as programming and things like that. We don't come back to the council and say, we're going to offer, you know, a second round of Tai Chi at the Friendship Center, we don't, we don't come back for those types of decisions to council. But again, development projects, projects that need an alternate funding source, those would come back as changes to the plan, or reaffirmation of the plan before council.
Jerry?
I think you answered it, the other one just had to do with, we're going to see a lot of changes, a lot of new things that pop up, something new, and those will just come back, so your answer to, thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I just want to say again, it's just, what a dynamic time. Yeah, I, I just want to say again, it's just, what a dynamic time to live in this community. You know, growing up here, I really never thought playing in, in the bluffs and around the lake and on the river would, would be this exciting. And, and I think, just judging by the turnout here in this room, we have a, a community that's excited about our parks. And I'm really looking forward to it. I hope, I really hope we can, we can begin this with, with at least the kind of investment that a, a community one-tenth the size of Winona has done to start this, so.
One more thing?
Yes.
I was really open to having this moved back a month to get more input, et cetera, et cetera. But Paul, you're a hundred percent right. All you folks put so much work into it. You came here this evening. I'd be willing to vote on it in affirmative this evening.
Whether we vote tonight or two weeks from now, I'm going to vote for it. And I think this is probably true for the council.
Correct.
You know, I guess I wish we had all the council members here, but I will support the motion as well.
Mayor and council, I can just make one more comment. Hopefully, you don't view this as out of school. But just to remind you that Michelle Alexander, although not here tonight, was on our task force. So my assumption would be that she'd be in full support of the project. I guess that's the out-of-school portion. I guess my assumption is an assumption. But Michelle was part of the task force of the plan, so I think she would be in favor certainly of the option.
Can we make another not-so-assumption? Did I get a thumbs up from you? Okay, I'm going to take that as, a month from now, you'd still have everybody voting for it, so okay.
George?
Like I said, I, you know, we've, I've had discussion last week in going through the book and, and everything with it, and I probably will, well, I will vote to, to adopt this plan tonight. And I'll tell you who I'm voting for. I'm voting to adopt this plan tonight for the man back there that's holding the young child because he's going to be a big benefactor of that park. And the one that's crawling on the floor over there under gentleman's leg, she is going to benefit quite heavily from the park, probably more than what all of us will into the future, but we'll all be a benefactor of it. But certainly those two next generations coming up, so.
I think that's a really good point.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a comment on the process here that, that, you know, because of the holiday season and everything like that, this is a pretty meaty document. And we've had since, what, Thursday or Friday to review it? Although certainly we've had a lot of opportunity to hear from people and, and reports and media reports on the process. But, you know, as, as a person who tries to review everything, I would never have a report like this be to us at a time when it's not as busy in terms of other activities beyond the city to, to review.
Anything else? Pam?
I just have a counter-comment to that. And I think that the majority of this whole park plan has been substantially the same since more or less last August. So it's changed very little, and I think we should just take that and go.
I think we're probably ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who cares?
And moving back to item five point two, it's a resolution on government accounting standards. There are three resolutions.
I am moved to approve all three resolutions.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Al?
Yeah, just a comment on a chart that talks about, it's exhibit number two on the City of Winona Restricted Committed Fund Balance. There's just a typo on item one, two, seven. It should be a Japanese garden, J.A.P.A.N.E.S.E. That's, that's a non-critical comment, but one that certainly doesn't affect my vote on it, but just a typo.
Mary, did you want to make some comments?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments before we vote? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item five point three is the Gunderson Health System Occupational Health Service Agreements. There are two resolutions and two agreements.
Move to approve the attached resolutions.
Second.
Motion by Jerry and seconded by George. Discussion?
I heard that as a plural. Jerry?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Al?
I guess I keep asking questions on things here. This is interesting, I guess. It, it, I guess, goes to save us some, some monies. But my question is, for this particular company's services, where do some of those items, where are they, you know, opposed, or where are they conducted? You know, now with Winona Health, we have them, I assume, within our community? With Gunderson located in La Crosse, or, or other places around the area, where would they be then conducted?
Mayor and council, with Gunderson making more of a footprint in the city, currently they have services available at 111 Riverfront. And so we have tested some of those services already. And prospective employees have done pre-employment physical, also pre-employment drug screens with Gunderson, just as a trial for us to see how it would go.
So where, who decides which, which service to use?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question. What, what do you mean, which service?
Well, if someone has a pre-employment physical or something like that, does the city direct them to one location or the other?
Correct. We would make the decision based on availability. So there may be an instance where Gunderson might not be able to perform the pre-employment physical based on scheduling and our schedule to get the employee started. So we might choose to use one-on-one at that point.
So this gives you a little more flexibility than what you have now in other words?
It does, yes. Currently with our random drug screens for DOT randoms, we currently need to pre-schedule those, so that kind of defeats the purpose of random.
Okay. And also on the scheduling for the Business Health Department, on item four, you talk, is, there's a no-show charge of fifty dollars on the schedule?
Okay. We, we would work really hard with the employee not to have that happen.
Has this happened before under the grant agreement?
No, we've never had anyone miss a drug screen or, or physical test.
Certainly, if they want to employ or pass a drug physical, they don't. But I, I just noticed that, you know, there was a charge that the city would be paying, I assume, if a particular person didn't show up.
I think Gunderson is really good about giving an advance notice. Usually an employee, prospective employee would notify us if they have conflict, and then we would try to schedule it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just, again, this gives us greater flexibility. This is not an exclusive with Gunderson. We would remain using services at Winona Health as well. It just gives us that option and gives us a different price to work with.
Just a comment, I mean, I'm sure Gunderson is expanding, but I'd certainly like to see us use the, the local provider and the community medical provider as much as possible.
We, we will. Again, the main thing is those random drug tests that you have to schedule, it defeats the purpose.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item five point four is the 2019 Minnesota City Participation Program.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by George. Discussion?
Nick, maybe? Mayor and council, for this program here, it's dedicated funds to our local lenders for first-time home buyers, low and moderate income. With the agenda item, this program has been very successful here in Winona, especially in 2018, in helping low-income families get into homeownership. The average income for a household of two that utilizes this loan package through Minnesota Housing is just over forty-seven thousand dollars. Average closing cost in a homeless is just over a hundred and fifteen for these households. So it's a very good allocation of funds for our lenders and for our community.
You went from seven last year to twenty-four this year.
Correct.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
George?
Is there any certain area that they would be targeting?
Nope. This is citywide. Any homes, for sale homes for first-time home buyers within the city of Winona.
And then there's the attached.
I never got one in my pocket.
I didn't have one either.
Okay, good, I'm not the only one.
No.
That's what I'm looking for.
Do you have it? Do you have it, five point four?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have it.
You didn't?
Well, maybe we should table it then.
Who, Al, you didn't have it, I didn't have it.
I'm reading it.
Okay. Well.
It's a good program.
Yeah, I reckon I just like to look at what I'm going on.
I think we should, if there's no reason not to table it, I mean, we should.
Thank you.
This, this isn't time-sensitive, is it?
The, the application is due on January fifteenth. We have an open application period. It's an open application period from January second to the fifteenth. The allocations for Minnesota Housing for our local lenders are based off of previous success of the programs, which this past year were very successful, where we had an allocation of right around four hundred and thirty thousand, and local lenders committed over two point eight million dollars worth of first-time home buyer loans here in the city of Winona. Minnesota Housing, they also take into their budget of what they can give out, and that's to a ratio then of our population here in Winona of what they would allocate for us. We've operated this program since 2015 with our local lenders in collaboration with Minnesota Housing.
Well, I think I have enough information to vote, so. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Kerry's.
Item five point five has been withdrawn at the request of staff. We'll move to item five point six. It's the plat review for the Berg Estates subdivision. And they are altering a lot line between two existing lots.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul and seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item five point seven is the Energy Education Program.
I would move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Paul and seconded by George. Can we have Mr. Howard tell us, let's talk in here?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The, what we have here is a grant application to develop a energy education program. It would be largely developed with myself, our Green Corps member for the year, and also Nick Clarkson has been helping, community development specialist. And be working with schools to reglet a lesson plan for energy education, but also two events for educating the public. One, one is specifically geared towards low-income households and continuing the work that we did in past years in those areas.
Paul?
Well, I just, thank you. I, I have a few questions here. Your, your cover information talks about working with teachers from area schools. Are those schools just in the city of Winona?
We would focus on really any school that would be interested in, in working with us. So whether that's Ridgeway, Cotter, Ron Public, Area Public Schools, it's, it, it's really the area schools that I would say, anyone that'd be interested, we'd be happy to, happy to.
So they have to express an interest first rather than?
Well, we've reached, we've, we've put out some feelers to see if there is interest with schools, and we have received some positive interest from a number of the school, a number of the schools, including Ridgeway. And so it, we will try to, we will reach out to them and let them decide if they want to work with us.
Paul?
One question dropped my mind, but I, I'd be happy to make, help you make some connections in the school district here, and worked with some of the educators here in Watts about, and at Cotter, related to some energy efficiency lessons and things. And I know a few of them would be happy to help.
Anything else? George?
So as I see this, it is just not the city of Winona proper, it's surrounding area of it.
It's, we would open it to people who are interested. So the major person working on this is our, is the Green Corps member who's housed in the city, but she is actually, you know, her, her goal is to help the community at large. So my time would not be necessarily being used heavily towards, towards the project. It'd be more of our Green Corps member who's, who has more of a community-based focus.
Thank you.
And then what, what expense do you see from, from the city for this?
It would really be my time and possibly Nick Clarkson, the junior development specialist's time going on this, working on this project. But the grant would, would fund really any of the materials that we would, we would need. And some of our time, depending on, depending on cost, could be covered by the grant.
Al?
I really do encourage you to work on the low-income aspect of the program because I think that's where it would probably serve a, a good population within the city of Winona, within the core city of Winona.
Anything else? I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item five point eight is the 2018 Sidewalk Replacement Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate.
Move to approve the attached resolution. Second.
Motion by George and seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item five point ten, the ICE Park Agreement for Use of Land.
I move to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Paul and seconded by George. Discussion?
I wonder if Mr. Barnhart is, is here and can maybe? Ross, thank you.
Mayor and council, so this is a sub-agreement with the Bergs All-Property Owner to relocate the ICE Park back to the original site that we had discussed a couple of years back. So this is just executing that agreement so that we can run those across that property essential.
Al?
Yeah, I support this. I know there was some concern about the temporary location and the effect it was having as far as West Lake Boulevard and the water that sometimes flows on the road below, whether or not it came from that site was a kind of undetermined point of view, but I'm glad to see it here. And it's close to the development. It's already been underway now for a few years around the Sugarloaf area, so it's appropriate to do it this time. So I'm glad you were able to work that out.
George?
So just following the map here, so I know to make sure that, this is in the quarry there right by Edina Railroad, right?
Yes, that is correct. It's the, the old quarry site, right, kind of up and west of Edina.
So then any water thawing down would end up into that abandoned quarry?
Yes, there's a large thirty-to-sixty-foot bench at the base of the quarry that was formerly above the foot. So that's that large bench that we catch.
I'm sorry, Paul?
And partners to help move this project, project forward?
Yes, absolutely. So as of the last four years and continuing this year, we have a great partnership with the Minnesota Climbers Association. We work with closely, as well as the Recreation Alliance, helps organize volunteers from around the community, as well as places as far as Eau Claire and Minneapolis that come to help facilitate this project, volunteers.
Any other comments? I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's.
Item five point eleven is a resolution to certify the polling places for 2019 elections.
Move to approve the follow, the resolution certifying the polling places?
Second.
Cerrys?
Item five point twelve is the designation of the official newspaper for 2019. The low bidder was the Winona Daily News with a bid of four cents. Our current bid number is eight cents.
I would move to adopt the following resolution to award the contract to Winona Daily News. I'll second that.
Motion by George and seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Just a comment, I think years ago, wasn't it like twenty-two cents or something like that?
The rate they're going is going to be free here.
They'll be paying us.
I believe it's been as high as twelve cents.
Twelve cents, okay. Seemed, seemed a lot higher in the years past, but anyway, so this is good. Let's have a competition.
All right, I think we can vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cerrys?
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with George.
Okay, thank you. Jerry, it was an honor to serve with you for the past twenty years, and I want to thank you for your support for projects that affected the Fourth Ward and helped the Fourth Ward and for projects throughout the city. And as you leave tonight or at the end of the year, you definitely are leaving at the top of your game, and it was an honor to have served with you for the past twenty years. Thank you. And to everyone, have a very Merry Christmas and a healthy and happy and prosperous 2019, and get ready for all the challenges. Thank you.
Paul?
I want to echo Councilmember Worzakowski's comments about Councilmember Craig. I've learned a lot just in two short years from listening and watching Jerry do his work here at, at this table, and, and it's been an honor for me to serve with him, and I want to thank him as a resident of the community for serving, for serving the city. Thank you very much. I also want to thank the park staff for their excellent work on ice rink. I love skating, and boy, let me tell you, that's, that's a gem, and it, it hit me right where it counts, right away, right off the bat. So I will be down there skating without a doubt. It's really an attraction. I, I also want to commend Lee Gundersheimer and Main Street and the organizers of the Holiday Market. Wow, what a huge success. I was down there, and there are hundreds and hundreds of people down there on a winter day, shopping. We want to get some more food booths down there, hopefully, and, and I know there was a little hiccup there, but wow, that was great, great time to be down there. I want to acknowledge the cyclists from Pedal for the People for their cool ride around the east end of town on Saturday to benefit the Warming Center. That's their third ride so far this season. They've raised nearly five hundred dollars for local charities, and, and the most recent one, of course, being the Warming Center. It's really a, a great opportunity to promote the, the connections that we need to focus on and, and, you know, make happen here in the community to, to get people to those assets that we have. And then I want to offer my condolences to the Greg Olson family for the loss of his partner and to Bailey and Taylor for the loss of their mother. That's it.
Pam?
Nothing for me tonight. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'll save my concerns for the next, for next year.
Building them up.
That's right.
Don't wait too long. Jerry?
Condolences to the Greg Olson family as well, and I'll make this brief to everybody in Winona. Thank you.
Al?
Over to you, Al.
That was brief. Condolences to the family of Daryl Johnson, who recently passed away. Daryl was the city of Winona's finance director for many years and recently passed away. I remember serving with him, creating and crafting, as Jerry probably does, city budgets over the years and his method and, and all of that, so sympathy to his family. Also, my comments on, on Jerry, I'll be, well, brief, I guess. Gentleman who has sat to my right for many, many years on council here. Jerry has served his country and his community. Country when he was deployed. And I also, I shouldn't tell you this, Jerry, but I, I enjoyed sitting next to Deb and Doc when you were deployed, but-
They were far more popular than I was.
I, I also wish to recognize the fact that when you came on, you were a member of something called the Common Sense Coalition.
Yes.
And so this is sort of an end of that particular era in local community politics, but again, you've carried out the mission, and well done.
Thank you.
And that's all, Mayor.
Thank you.
And then under the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes from December third, the final adoption of an ordinance to prohibit parking on Franklin Street, and an ordinance to set the fee for solar permits.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cerrys?
Mayor, I move, I put it over to Councilman Craig.
Do we, do we have to reset?
No, we're adjourning.
We are adjourning. Okay.
You're adjourning.
We are adjourning, so is there a motion to adjourn?
What the heck? No, I'm going to sit here all night. You're going, no, yes, I, I want to adjourn.
Jerry moves to adjourn, and-
I will second to what they have.
George will second it tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
It's a meeting, that way you don't have to-
We're still here to, you know, talk to the lady.